Let's call this meeting the Hazel Planning Commission Order. First item of business is a roll call.
Blood.
Here.
Rinkie, Azir.
Here.
Coleman.
Here.
Atkins.
Williams.
Here.
Next item of business is the presentation approval of minutes of November ninth, two thousand twenty-three.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second that.
Have a motion second to approve as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? I abstain. Under due business, we have a public hearing zone change HC to SF for sixty-five thirty-seven South Broadway. Protect the rights of all parties involved in order to create an opportunity for everyone to speak their opinions and present information that Hazel Planning Commission follows a specific procedure in reaching a decision. A copy is available by the door. Your attention to this procedure is appreciated. We now formally open the public hearing to consider the proposed zone change from HC heavy commercial to SF single-family residential for property located at lot one, block A of Shook Addition to Hayesville. Do members, any members of the planning commission have a conflict of interest in this case? If so, please disqualify yourself from further action. Have any members received any written or electronic communications on this matter? Staff, please present.
Good evening. Before I use the staff report for the zone change for lot one, block A of the Shook Addition to Hayesville, from heavy commercial to a single-family residential. The property owner wishes to build a home on the property. A primary structure must be built before an accessory structure is built. Comments are in the staff report before you. Staff is recommending the approval of the zone change from heavy commercial to single-family. Staff, I'm here to answer any questions you may have, as well as I can.
Any questions for staff? Anybody here for the agent, for the applicant? That would like to speak?
Oh, no, so I don't have questions.
Have you guys gotten through the packet yet? There is a letter in the back you should read, and I don't know if you've seen this letter. From the neighbor to the north, addressing concerns about... They, Air Capital Salvage does what they do, and they want to be a good neighbor. They're concerned that you putting a house there is going to bring you closer and create an issue that isn't there now.
Yes, he, he came by the house and talked to me one day about it, but I don't, I'm not in a hurry to build the house there.
Okay.
And I have a granddaughter that may be interested, but I've lived, well, I've been west of that salvage for fifty-five years.
Okay, so you have no concerns that moving a little bit closer is going to be louder, or?
No, no, I'm just trying to get some of my affairs in order, and since we've had that res- uh, planted, and so we divided it in half then.
Okay.
No, but, uh, he didn't, after I talked to him, he seemed fine.
Okay.
There is two other properties that are directly to the west of the salvage yard, too. So, the salvage yard is actually south of this property, so, I mean...
And those are all zoned heavy commercial as well?
No, just the, this property and the salvage yard right there are zoned heavy commercial. Across the street, her residence, and then there's two other lots that are right there next to it. That have been residential for a long time.
Okay.
That have homes on them.
Didn't we recently approve?
Yeah, there was a lot split, and then she platted the property.
Was it the same lot?
Yeah, I had, yes. It runs from Broadway all the way back into my area there on Ward's Fourth on Sandy. And my daughter was going to build something there, and then she had, she, she built somewhere else. They bought a house in Oklahoma, so, uh...
That is somewhere else.
It, it is, yes. And, but the front half, I want to leave commercial. And when they were plating and surveying it, they asked if we wanted to divide it, and I thought, sure. So, because right off Broadway-
That you could have commercial on one side and residential on the other.
Right, but you don't want commercial back in my neighborhood.
Right.
That would be the bad part.
Yeah.
And so, since it is divided in half, then I thought we could rezone the back part, and then it would be easier, you know, if my granddaughter wants to build or can, or if my kids have to do something with it, and...
Yeah, I think it makes sense, put residential against residential. My, my only concern was that, I think he raises a valid point, that if you're not from that area and you buy that house and not realizing that you're next to a salvage yard, then three months in, you have a concern with it.
Right.
He's not doing anything on that property that I've been doing for the last fifty years, and I don't want to create undue hardship for him by allowing this.
Right, and I've tried to think how long we've owned it, probably twenty years.
Okay.
My husband's been gone fifteen, so, but, yeah, I'm not in a hurry to do anything. I just thought, and I'm not going to try to sell it or to sell it to somebody to build a house. Um, you know, unless my granddaughter decides that she can do that. And we all recognize the salvage, you know, I mean, like I said, I've lived there for so long, and my grandkids are all close around and have been to my house a lot.
Okay.
So, okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Uh, now's the time for any member of the public to speak. I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
Those opposed in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Public comment is now closed. For Commission Act, the floor is open to commissioners' comments regarding the following criteria. I'm not going to read all those. Any other discussion? General comment? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that the planning commission recommends approval of the zone change request from HC heavy commercial to SF single-family residential for the property located at lot one, block A of the Shook Addition to Hayesville.
That's presented. Have a motion as a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Thank you. Next item of business is the public hearing for the land use map. Uh, same rules as before. We now formally open the public hearing to consider revisions to the land use map for the city of Hayesville. Staff, please present.
In your packet, you have the proposed revisions by staff to the land use map. There are all, these are all the changes that we discussed back in the workshop in October. Changes are listed in the memo before you. I will not plan to read all these changes unless you want me to or have any other questions regarding these changes. Um, two changes. I, we did see afterwards was the east side of Kane Drive changed to industrial, and the neighborhood east of the Plaza Drive changed the neighborhood makes use.
Any additions to the changes that we see here that we'd like to add?
I just, I have the one at the sixty-third and Broadway West corner. It's a mixed use.
Northwest corner of the intersection, the hard corner?
Northwest corner and the little smaller section, the two small sections of ground on the west side of Broadway.
Okay. Any other changes or anything else anybody would like to discuss?
Uh, one question on the, oh gosh, just lost it. Property south of him, it changed to dark blue to designate industrial. That was all of them, right?
Correct.
Yeah, that's right. And I looked at the map, and it looked like all of them. I just wanted to make sure.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you want to confirm that, I mean, they have that on the screen, and anybody watching can look on the webpage, but everything is on here that is changed?
Yeah. The, the... Yeah, good. Okay.
Any more questions for staff? Now's the time for any member of the public to speak. I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Public comment is now closed for Commission Action, and the floor is open to commissioners' comments. Any other discussion or motion? Yeah.
I move that the planning commission recommends approval of the revisions to the land use map for the city of Hayesville, Sedgwick County, Kansas, as presented.
I'll second.
Motion second to recommend approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next item of business is the public hearing for the comprehensive plan. We now formally open the public hearing to consider the comprehensive plan for the city of Hayesville. Staff, present.
In the packet, before I use a copy of the comprehensive plan for the city, um, references to the South Broadway quarter plan was removed throughout the document. On page two, the population growth was updated. On page six, section land use and growth, the square miles were reduced to twenty-point-four-three. This had included the floodway in previous calculations. On page eight, bicycle facilities total miles was updated to fourteen-point-six-two miles. On page eighteen, the number of parks was updated to seventeen, which includes three active parks and fourteen passive parks. These are all the changes that we recommend by us.
Any questions for staff? Now's the time for any member of the public to speak. Uh, entertain a motion for closing the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion second to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Public comment is now closed for Commissioners Action. The floor is open to Commission comments or a motion.
I'll make a motion that we, Planning Commission approve, um, changes of zoning code amendment for the city of Hazel, Sedgwick County, Kansas.
I'll second that.
Have a motion as second to recommend approval of the comprehensive plan as presented. All in favor? Oops. Those opposed? I got you.
Thought that's the one we were, never mind.
We now formally open the public hearing to consider zoning code amendment for the city of Hayesville. Any members of the planning commission have a conflict of interest in this case? Have any members received any written or electronic communications on this matter? Staff, please present.
In your packet is the proposed amendments to the zoning regulations. In section two hundred, the following was changed. Accessory apartments definition. We added bar divinum back in, added cargo containers back in, and updated the sight vision triangle definition. In section four hundred, changed accessory apartments to additional use in office commercial, light commercial, and heavy commercial districts. We changed cemetery to additional use in all zoning districts, added convenience store to permitted use in office commercial district, added micro brewery to permitted use in office commercial and light commercial district, add retail general to permitted use in hotel motel commercial district, added riding academy or stable changed to permitted use in light industrial district, added short-term residential to permitted use in two-family residential district with permit required, and corrected the wording permit required. Removed tattooing and body piercing facility use. SSS include with personal improvement service definition. Changed tavern and drinking establishment to permitted use in office commercial district. Changed storage outdoor as a principal use to outdoor storage must have an all-weather surface and be screened from adjacent properties and any public roadway, and no inoperable vehicle stored in more than forty-five acres. And changed vehicle storage yard to additional use, and remove provided any area for the purpose of providing space condition. Attached to the draft are the proposed changes to the zoning code. These are all the changes that we caught after updates were made.
Any questions for staff?
I have one question on the drinking establishment permitted. Why isn't it the same as the micro brewery?
Which one are you?
So, it says updated tavern and drinking establishment to permitted use in office commercial district.
So, it's not the same as you said, which one?
The micro brewery. It says office commercial and light commercial.
Which begs the question, does a micro brewery also allow?
If you're a micro brewery, you have to be a drinking establishment. A micro brewery cannot sell a glass of beer. You have to be a drinking establishment on top of a micro brewery.
Okay. So, those probably should be the same?
They're the same.
Okay, so that would be, um, permitted-
Which one is the correct one?
In office commercial, light commercial, heavy commercial, light industrial, heavy industrial, so tavern and drinking establishment would just need to be added for office commercial as permitted? Is that what you mean? That's what you?
Just as long as they're the same.
Yeah, that's what, the difference that I am seeing, unless somebody sees something different.
Office commercial, light commercial.
Um, yeah, I mean, because that could be like a small-
Yeah.
Yeah.
-bar in an office or commercial area, so we need to add... Tavern and de- or, sorry. Okay. I believe I have that. Okay.
Any other questions for staff? Now's the time for any member of the public to speak. Would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion second to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Public comment is now closed for Commission Action. The floor is open to Commissioners comments or a motion.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval of the zoning code amendment. With the change of moving updated tavern or drinking establishment to the line with updated micro brewery to permitted use in office commercial and light commercial district.
To make them the same uses?
To make the same uses.
Second.
A motion as second to approve the zoning code amendment with changes discussed in the room tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Next item of business, review of the twenty-four closing calendar.
This is just here for your review, what we're planning for the whole year and everything. I did make the one correction to the city council, that the meeting in January would be meeting on February twelfth, not February eighth, for city council, if there's a meeting.
Gotcha. No action?
No.
Next item of business, the review of the twenty-twenty-four master plan review calendar.
Same, just, uh, for you to have for your review and just to look at, nothing to vote on.
Is it possible for you to remove the comprehensive plan to, say, October? Does anybody else endorse that to me, since I have to do all the public hearings?
That's fine.
I like it.
Do they have to do the capital improvement before the comp plan, or can?
So, we usually have to do review of everything that goes along with the comp plan first.
So, we only had... The land use map just lagged. This is why we're doing more than one right now?
Yes. So, the land use map is the one that we finally had gotten a lot of changes to and took a little bit longer this year. Um, the bicycle and the park plan, obviously, and the historic, had to go through those committees first, which they don't usually review them until March, so we try to get those by June. This next year should go a little bit smoother. Um, I don't anticipate a lot of changes to the land use map or the comp plan, so this next year may not require a public hearing, so I will try to not get them-
I'll stop whining then, sorry.
I'll try not to hit them in one meeting.
No old business?
None.
Or correspondence?
None.
Off agenda? Is that you, Tim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tim Austin with Iron Horse Development, one forty-two Emporia, Wichita, Kansas. Wanted to just address the planning commission. Do, do they have the copy of the sketch plat that I sent?
They do not.
Okay, I brought some, just in case. We have, uh, we have some property under contract around Seventy-Ninth and Seneca. It's forty-three acres. It's, um, outside the city limits, but it's within your subdivision regulations jurisdiction. And want to try and just get a little bit of guidance, because it costs money to do a preliminary plat, and more accustomed to doing plats through the Wichita Cedric County zoning code and subdivision regs where they accommodate, uh, sketch plats. And your subdivision regs didn't really accommodate it, so we thought, in talking with Georgie and Jonathan, this would be a good place, maybe just to ask some, for some guidance. The way the subdivision regs read is that it would be in conformance with, with county policies, but there, there are some differences between the county regs and your city regs, and I just wanted to get some clarification about, um, you know, those differences, I guess, what your thoughts are, so I can make sure our surveyor prepares it, and, uh, in a way that is kind of how you guys would like to see it, so... With that, I hand out just a, a sketch plat. It's just kind of a concept drawing that our engineer put together. Um, had talked to Tim Wagner while he was still the county sanitarian, um, with the soils and stuff. He was recommending, um, minimum lot sizes of two acres for septic uses. There is, uh, there is city water that crosses this property, and so, in, in talking with city staff, the thought process would be, um, lots that would be served connected to the city, um, public water system, which I think makes sense, and then, uh, put it on septics. So, the, kind of, had about three or four just general questions. One is, is cul-de-sac length. I believe your subdivision regs, um, limit it to typically about five hundred feet, but we're about twenty-six hundred feet depth, and so that, that's just a question to, to think about. Um, the question-
We, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, but-
Yeah.
We've adopted county outside city limits, correct?
Correct.
So, what does county say for?
Uh, the county, I believe, is like twelve hundred feet for a, a single dead-end point of access. The subdivision to the north is an older, I think nineteen-fifties subdivision. It's, it is a single point of access by twenty-six hundred feet. The county has-
The county has exceptions, right?
Yeah, it does allow exceptions, and that, that was the question. If you, um, you know, if it's the will of your organization to allow for an exception, we would seek that. If not, sometimes the way we do it is, as you probably remember, sometimes we plan for a future second point of access, or I could try to see if I could get a easement across one of the properties to get to that, you know, street to the north or something like that.
I mean, you're not going to get anything going east across that creek, and I doubt unless you buy something to the south, you're going to get there, but if I remember correctly, you can increase the street width and still get up to twenty-six and meet all their requirements. Ultimately, it's going to be county fire that is going to be the ultimate yes or no.
Okay.
But I don't know that, at least I have a problem with it, as long as you're meeting all the other county requirements.
Okay. Okay. Um, and would that then also be, so things like the number of lots on a single point served by a single point access, sometimes, as you, as you remember, there are some limitations on that, and we would try to, we, we would abide by that, obviously. That's a county fire issue as well, so. Okay, okay. Generally, I guess, as long as we need to make the fire department happy, we're good.
Yeah, we'd like to have residential development here as much as anybody else, so I'm not going to stand in your way as long as you're meeting all the requirements.
Okay, okay. Just appreciate having the chance to get some clarification, so.
Yeah, so during the planning process, it'll be sent out to the county. They'll make their recommendations, so we will recommend that you accommodate their changes, um, before approval.
Okay, yeah, it's good. Haven't seen the chairman for a lot of years, so it's good to see him.
Any other questions you have? Obviously, this isn't, we're looking at a sketch, not anything-
It's, it's just a sketch, but the, what I'll do after tonight is I'll go out and get, uh, get preliminary plat based pretty much on those parameters. I think, I don't like some of the geometrics on that, but, uh, we'll get something pulled together. My, my thought is the, probably, uh, somewhere in the two to five acre lots, which should be around nineteen lots total, so not, not a large number.
That means county septic standards is?
Yeah.
And then the other, other problem is turning around a fire truck in that cul-de-sac is?
Correct. The, the other thing, just for you guys to be aware, and I'm sure you are, there is a significant amount of flood plain, so any of the, we'll have to have a minimum building pad elevation, and so any building permits, they'll have to, they'll have to elevate those building pads up above the flood plain.
I have one question. I'm, I'm not sure. Which-
I have one question. I'm, I'm not sure. Which corner, where is?
It's south of, on lot
South of Seventy-Ninth and eighty-first.
All right, so where is Seventy-Ninth up there?
Just up. At the top.
At the top, okay. You know, this would be at the, at the half-mile line or quarter-mile line. It's in that, it's in that southwest quarter section of that, of that particular section between Seventy-Ninth and, what is that, Ninety-Six, whatever that is, that next mile line to the south. Sixteen, Seventy-Nine?
Eight.
Eighty-seven, sorry. Can't do my math.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Any other off agenda?
None.
Item eight.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
A motion second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Thank you, everybody.